Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 6:32. We are going to go ahead and do the special board meeting. This special meeting of the Judson Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 6:32. I am very pleased that you have taken this time to join us this evening. As the Judson Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals and policies and oversee the management of the district. We are responsible for approving budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and to listen to reports from the superintendent. We are not here to make administrative or management decisions pertaining to the daily operation of the district. This is the responsibility of the superintendent. In compliance with the state government code on open meetings, tonight's agenda has been appropriately posted. This is a meeting in public, not a meeting of the public. As our guests, you are welcome to observe and listen. These proceedings are being video and audio recorded and will become part of Judson's permanent legal record. In order that the tape adequately reflects these proceedings, please silence your mobile phones and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings are recorded accurately, I may have to ask for order preerratically should I notice that disruptions are interfering with our recording capabilities. Once again, the board extends each of you a sincere welcome. Thank you for your interest in the Judson ISD. We have established a quorum. I will not, I will now call roll. Mr. LaFolles.
Here, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Ms. Adair.
Good evening. Thank you for voting.
Mr. Macias.
Welcome.
Mr. Flores.
President, welcome.
Mr. Salio.
President, thank you for coming.
Ms. Williams.
President, thank you for coming.
Arnoldo Salinas, the board president. Dr. Mackey.
President.
We will be doing the pledge of allegiance and invocation during the regular board meeting. Recognition, acknowledgement of visitors or citizens to be heard. And I believe we have one, somebody's addressing the board. Marilyn McKinney.
Marilyn, this is the regular meeting.
Regular meeting. Oh, yes ma'am, okay. Anybody else? And we'll do the recognitions during the regular board meeting of any guests that are here with us tonight. Consider, item three, consider an approval of a resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of a bond election and other matters in connection therewith. Go ahead, a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion, and a motion by Mr. LaFolles, second by Ms. Williams. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and do the canvassing of the votes for the bond. Dr. Mackey?
Yes. Mr. President, members of the board, for bond election, Judson ISD, there was a total of 1,453 votes. For, and with 64 percent, and there was, there was 817 votes, 35.99 against. In the early voting, there was 871 for, and voting day, there was 582 for. Against, there was 542 early voting against, and 275 on Election Day against. Came to a total of 1,453 for, with the, with the percentage of 64.01, and against is 817, which is 35.99 percent against. And we need to put that in the early vote, and that'll be in the resol, that'll be in the resolution.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, we had a motion, and a second. Do we vote on the, on the bond, accepting the total vote on the bond?
Is that correct, Ms. Adair?
Yes.
I'm a little confused. What is the resolution for both, Dr. Mackey?
Yes. No, 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 it's just for the bond.
For the bond.
So first resolution is just for the bond?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a little bit confused. So are we just voting to approve the count that Dr. Mackey just read on the bond election?
That, that is correct, unless you wanted to go precinct by precinct by precinct.
No, I only want to do whatever's required.
Yes. Just a total vote.
So there isn't a resolution per se that is being read, it's just the count? Is that right?
It's the resolution with the count. This is the resolution. It says, this is the resolution, you don't have to read it, and then the count. Yeah, just put the votes in there.
All right. Okay. Any questions for any board members? Go ahead.
We did before, we've done it all the time.
Okay. Okay. So.
Superintendent, go ahead.
Oh. Over the bond, right here?
Yes.
And it's this one?
Yes.
Right? You want to precinct, precinct by precinct? Okay. Okay, we'll do that. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and.
Let me go ahead and read it out?
Yes, we're gonna go ahead and read it by precinct. Go ahead, Dr. Mackey.
Okay. 47 against, 4056, 74, 55 against, 4057, 78 for, 43 against, 4059, 35 for, 29 against, 4061, 1 for, 4 against, 4063, 2 for, 1 against, 4064, 29 for, 32 against, 4065, 15 for, 19 against, 4066, 23 for, 11 against, 4067, 17 for, 18 against, 4076, 15 for, 7 against, 4079, 26 for, 23 against, 4080, 17 for, 11 against, 4088, 40, 43 for, 28 against, 4089, 52 for, 20 against, 4090, 14 for, 4 against, 4092, 1 for, 1 against, 4097, 15 for, 4100, 8 for, 4 against, 4104, 4 for, 0 against, 4105, 67 for, 33 against, 4111, 2 for, 0 against, 4116, 2 for, 3 against, 4133, 4, 0 against, 4133, 32, 84, 38 against, 4143, 15 for, 4 against, 4144, 7 for, 8 against, 4146, 1 for, 0 against, 4150, 15 for, 12 against, 4156, 1 for, 6 against, 4158, 1 for, 0 against, 4166, 4, 3 against, 4161, 5 for, 1 against, 4162, 44, 13 against, 4163, 26 for, 10 against, 4164, 51 for, 28 against, 4168, 9 for, 9 against, 4189, 0 for, 3 against, 4197, 1 for, 0 against, 4198, 11 for, and 5 against. Total of 871, that was 800, yeah. 871 for, 582 against, with a total of 64 percent, of 1453. 54, 6401, I mean. And 30, 64 percent for, and 35 percent against.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, ma'am, we can go ahead and do the vote, no?
Okay. We have the totals for the bond. All those in favor signifying by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed likewise. Motion carries. Yes.
Before you go to item five, I would ask if the superintendent can ensure that the resolution that we voted on is posted in a prominent place on the website for interested citizens that came out and supported the bond, and so they can have access to that resolution.
Where is it?
Is that okay? Dr. Mackey?
Yeah, where's the, excuse me just a minute, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Thank you for your patience. Okay, now we proceed. What was read, and we voted on the early voting. Okay, now we need a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the canvassing of the Election Day voting for the bond election.
Okay. And second by Ms., motion by Ms. Adair, second by Ms. Williams. Okay, Dr. Mackey, can you give us a total for elec, I mean, the whole total for the whole election on the bond?
Okay. 30, 3103, 13 for 1 against, 3124, 21 for 7 against, 3183, 0 for 1 against, 4053, 2 for 0 against, 4055, 59 for, 69 against, 4056, 115 for, 95 against, 4057, 106 for, 47 against, 4059, 57 for, 42 against, 4061, 1 for 6 against, 4063, 3 for 2 against, 4064, 64 for, 62 against, 4065, 35 for, 32 against, 4066, 49 for, 19 against, 4067, 25 for, 28 against, 47, 4076, 24 for, 9 against, 4079, 46 for, 29 against, 4080, 32 for, 21 against, 4088, 68 for, 29 against, 4089, 79 for, 28 against, 4090, 19 for, 4 against, 4092, 2 for, 1 against, 4097, 24, 0 against, 4100, 13 for, 6 against, 4104, 7 for, 1 against, 4105, 104, 41 against, 4106, 2 for, 0 against, 4111, 2 for, 0 against, 4116, 2 for, 3 against, 4135, 4 0 against, 4132, 126 for, 64 against, 413, 4143, 29 for, 4 against, 4144, 19 for, 18 against, 4146, 2 for, 0 against, 4150, 23 for, 13 against, 4156, 8 for, 7 against, 4158, 1 for, 0 against, 4160, 10 for, 7 against, 4161, 8 for, 2 against, 4162, 57 for, 18 against, 4163, 59 for, 31 against, 4164, 94 for, 45 against, 4168, 18 for, 12 against, 4100, 1 for, 3 against, 4197, 1 for, 0 against, 4198, 26 for, 10 against. Total of 1,453 with 64 percent for, 817 with 35 percent against. Mr. President.
Thank you. We now have the total vote.
We're ready to vote.
Yes. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and vote. All those in favor signifying by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed likewise. Motion carries on the bond, canvassing of the bond election. Number four, number five. We are now gonna canvass the votes for May 11th trustee election. And we'll start with, by the way, Mr. LaFolles did not have an opponent, but he will be sworn in with the rest of the members in, in a few minutes when we finish in the canvassing of the votes. Congratulations, Mr. LaFolles. Okay, the first one we're gonna do is single-member District 3. One is Gilbert Flores, two is Deborah Eaton.
I got it, good.
Okay. Precinct, 4065, 20 Mr. Flores, 7 Ms. Eaton, 4066, 23 Mr. Flores, 11 Ms. Eaton, 4088, 3 Mr. Flores, 0 Ms. Eaton, 4143, 11 Mr. Flores, 3 Ms. Eaton, 4146, 1 0, 4150, 7 Mr. Flores, 1 Ms. Eaton, 4156, 4 Gilbert, 4 Mr. Flores, 4 Ms. Eaton, 4161, 2 Mr. Flores, 2 Ms. Eaton, 4189, 1 Mr. Flores, 0 Ms. Eaton. And that is the conclusion for District 1. Now we have the total.
That's the next thing. Thank you, sir.
No problem. For single-member District 3, Gilbert Flores, 126, 60 percent. Deborah Eaton, 84, 40 percent. District, District number four. One, Art Salinas, two, Jose Macias. 4067, 26, 23. 414, 4188, 44 Macias, 32 Salinas. 4132, 57 Salinas. 73 Macias. 4163, 45 Salinas, 42 Macias. 4168, 8 Salinas, 22 Macias. 4197, 1 Salinas, 0 Macias. 4198, 4 Salinas, 32 Macias. Total vote, single-member District 4. Art Salinas, 185, 45.23 percent. Jose Macias, 224, 54.77 percent.
Position 1 was Art, Arnoldo Salinas, and position 2 was Johnny Harris. Starting with 4153, 2 for Salinas, none for Harris. 4059, 49 for Salinas, 44 for Harris. 4061, none for Salinas, 2 for Harris. 4079, 46 Salinas, 29 Harris. 4089, 73 Salinas, 32 Harris. 4090, 12 for Salinas, 11 for Harris. 4092, 1 for Salinas, 2 for Harris. 4130, 5 for Salinas, 0 for Harris. 30, or, excuse me, 4132, 25 Salinas, 25 Harris. 4162, 38 Salinas, 35 Harris. 4194, 2 Salinas, 0 Harris. That's it there. And so for our totals for District 5, Salinas 253, to Johnny Harris 181, so it's 58 percent for Salinas and 41 percent for Harris.
Okay, those are the votes for the election on the Board of Trustees. We are ready to vote?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Adair, second by Ms. Williams. All those in favor signifying by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed likewise. Motion carries on the Board of Trustees election. Before we move on to the swearing-in of newly elected board members, these votes have been certified by the Bear County, Bear County election, Board of Election.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you go to the swearing-in, I would just like to take a minute and ask that we recognize the Bond Committee Chairperson, Ms. Shannon Brown, and thank her for her hard work and due diligence during the regular meeting. Good. We don't want you to leave.
We have Commissioner Atkinson here with us that's gonna do the swearing-in. Thank you for taking up your important time, sir. Okay, board members, if we are ready, let's go ahead and do the swearing-in down, down.
All right, all right, good.
Where we going, all at once?
For you. Okay, first of all, let me say good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Tommy Atkinson, your Bear County Commissioner, and I serve in Precinct 4, which runs from Northern Hills Golf Course and Rolling Oaks Mall all the way to Elmendorf. And so I think it's very fitting and appropriate that y'all would take time from your busy schedules to be here to watch those who you entrust your children to and who the community deeply depends upon for success and greatness. Not greatness in a perfect sense, greatness in the sense that the road to progress is always under construction. And I take a great deal of humility in serving as your commissioner, because I know that no matter how hard I try, there's still more that I can do. I can always do better. And the main thing is that the effort's there, and we're always trying to do better. Judson ISD has a great and a proud track record in this community, and all of us are proud of the Judson ISD. Let me ask you to raise your right hand if you would, those of you who are, say aye.
Aye.
And your name.
I'm over to the left.
Swear.
Swear.
That I will do my duty.
That I will do my duty.
As a member of the Board of Trustees.
As a member of the Board of Trustees.
Of the Judson ISD.
Of the Judson ISD.
And will follow all the laws of this district.
And follow all the laws of this district.
This state.
State.
And this country.
And this country.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Election of, number seven is election of officers. Every, during every election, normally officers are elected. So at this time, we will have the election of board officers.
I have a motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Ms. Adair.
I move that all of the board officers that are currently in place remain as is with no changes.
Do we have a second?
Also, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Okay, discussion. Be no discussion. All of those in favor of the motion signifying by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed likewise. All those opposed likewise. We, we were, we are closing this special board meeting at 7:08.